And thank you, Madam Secretary. You have a roll call, please. Here.
Mark Byler.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Marshall.
Here.
Ed Solomon.
Here. Dr. Diddy Solicitor's Report. Filling in for Rob Cox this evening is Ms. Joanne Summers. Welcome.
Thank you. At this time, we don't have a Solicitor Report for this meeting. I know that you'll be meeting with Rob next week, and he'll provide you with some additional supplements.
Great. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
We're going to go to public comment. Mr. Frederickson, do we have a public comment? One person, did you say? Okay. Good evening. Hi, good evening. Could you state your name, what township you're from, and do me a favor, please leave the mask on as you speak? You have three minutes. Thank you.
My name's Paula Barson, and I'm from Richborough. Pardon me for reading, but it's easier for me that way. So, good evening. Thank you very much for having me. I just want to say that when considering a budget, we all know that there are items that we must pay for, and that we have little control over: our mortgage, utility, food, et cetera. But if we budget carefully and responsibly, once all the bills are paid, we have some money left. It is this portion that determines our quality of life. Do we put it away and save for a rainy day? Do we buy a new appliance, or perhaps a new pair of shoes? Whatever we decide, it impacts us not just as individuals, but ultimately, the entire family. When planning a family budget, you have a responsibility to the whole group. So too do you as a school board. Especially in these times. The money that is available after all the bills have been paid should be used to ensure the health and well-being of all the students and families in this district. This includes enacting initiatives laid out in the strategic plan, most importantly, those items related to student wellness, as well as ensuring the infrastructure is safe and conducive to learning. This is not about buying yourself a new pair of shoes because they are pretty. This is about ensuring that the district delivers quality education that best prepares our students for their post-Council Rock life, keeps our property values high, and sets the district up for success in the years ahead. You must consider how to move our district forward, preparing for a post-pandemic future. Each year's budget decision has implications for all the years to follow. Please make sure that you are keeping all of Council Rock strong. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a good evening. Just one. Thank you. And there we'll go to items for discussion. Letter A, fiscal and capital planning update. Dr. Fraser, are you taking that, sir?
I am, yes.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening to you as well. Good evening to the board, and good evening to our CR community. This evening's item for discussion, as detailed on the agenda this evening, is called Fiscal Capital Planning Update. We do have some new information, updated information for the community this evening. The board has been briefed on this, but we will, this will be our first opportunity to discuss this new information, and again, this will be new information for our community members. A couple, a couple pieces around this. First note that the deck, the PowerPoint that we're looking at, is loaded into Board Docs at home, so if you're looking for a copy of this, you may find a copy in Board Docs. And two, is that as it is indicated on the agenda, this is merely an item for discussion this evening. There will be no votes taken. There will be no motions made, or anything along those lines, at least we anticipate that. So this is truly just an item for discussion this evening that could lead to a vote at some point here in the future. So, the update that we have this evening, again, is going to be largely fiscal, but also dovetailing into the capital planning that we have been discussing at recent meetings. Mr. Frederickson? So, by way of review, the community will remember that recently, administratively, we presented to the board three reasonable, most realistic options that we considered, and that we were comfortable with. So the first of those was to delay all projects, all bids. You might recall that there were a total of five bids that were put out. The second option was to approve Hillcrest only, and the rationale there was that it fit within the current $24 million borrowing capacity. And then the third option, Option 3, was to approve both Hillcrest and Soul Finestone. And the, the note was made at that point that we, that it would have required a one-time cash payment of $2.37 million in order to avoid two things. One is to avoid any budget increase, and two would be to avoid needing to use capitalized interest. So ultimately, what the board approved on April 8th was a different combination of projects. So it was Item 2, or Option 2 from above, Hillcrest renovation, as well as the turf field at Council Rock South. So the question that we have before us this evening, again, as an item for discussion, is should the Soul Finestone addition renovation project be reconsidered? And up until this point, because we didn't yet have this new information that I'll share in a moment, I had stopped short of making any administrative recommendations, and this evening, I am going forward and making the administrative recommendation to indeed consider and to approve the Soul Finestone addition renovation project. Mr. Frederickson? So, what is it that has changed since April 8th? It's really on the fiscal side, and what we have is emerging end-of-year projections. We're into the latter half of April at this point, so we do still have two-plus months remaining in the fiscal year. But as you might imagine, we spend less money in these two months than we do any other two months during the fiscal year. So what we now have are end-of-year projections for both the revenue side of our fiscal standing, as well as the expenditure side. So, just a little bit of context. In a typical year, we end a fiscal year, we end a school year fiscal year, July 1 through June 30th, typically with approximately $5 million of positive end-of-year balance, or some people might refer to that as a surplus. And how that $5 million comes about is typically plus-one on the revenue side, plus-one percent, that is, on the revenue side, and minus-one percent on the expenditure side. And then with that $5 million, our past practice, and up until now, even our current practice, has been to transfer at least $3 million of that money for summer CIP work, capital improvement projects, and those are the summer maintenance projects. So those aren't things like renovations, or additions, or new builds, but it's just keeping up with the facilities that we have. So knowing that in a typical year, we end a year $5 million of positive end-of-year balance, right now, again, subject to change, our projections will get more firm as we get closer to June 30th. Then we'll be real tight thereafter. They won't be final until our books are audited in the fall, early fall. Right now, we are projecting not a $5 million end-of-year balance, positive balance, but an $8.5 million end-of-year positive balance. So, that's good news for us as a district, and with this good news and new information, this is, this is the reason for tonight's discussion, and the possibility of reconsidering the Soul Finestone project. So, the natural question is, okay, how did this $3.5 million increase come about? It's largely around the pandemic. So, this time last year is when we were approving the current 2020-21 budget. This time last year, as we unfortunately well remember, we were locked down. We couldn't even go down the street and get a haircut. So, we really, with our revenue projections, we really, you know, gave them a haircut, and, and pulled those back, not knowing what the summer, what the fall, the winter, and now into the spring was going to look like. So, the good news is that in actuality, as you can see on the slide, one of the, one of the best barometers of how our local community has fared through this pandemic is, is through the earned income tax revenue line item that we have in the budget. So, as you can see there, and again, we did ratchet back what those projections were, not knowing how open the economy would be. At the end of the day, we are projecting to be up by $2.3 million relative to what we budgeted this time last year. And even probably more profound is that we are projecting to be up $1.7 million compared with the actuals in the 2019-20 school year. Now, of course, the final three, three-and-a-half months of 2019-20, we were largely shut down. So, it's, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but still, the fact that we are projecting to end up $1.7 million ahead of where we finished with our actuals last year is a sign that, here in Council Rock, anyway, that largely our community has, 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 has fared this pandemic from a fiscal standpoint relatively well. Of course, this year, we did not transport as much as what we do in a typical year by virtue of the virtual instruction, so we had $1.6 million in transportation savings. And then really, generally speaking, on the expenditure side, we were very disciplined. We did have significant salary concessions by all members of the organization, every Council Rock employee. We deferred certain major purchases. And then we also had a phased release of the budget, and, and that was important. And it was strategic and intentional on our end, and I'll give Mr. Stone a ton of credit for this, because again, as we started the fiscal year last July 1st, things were largely still shut down. And we didn't know how those revenues were going to come in. So, as you can see there, for the first six months of the year, we only released 70% of the budget. We did not permit spending beyond that 70% threshold, because we knew that if revenues were coming in even lower than what we had ratcheted them back to, we knew that we were going to have to pull back even more on the expenditure side. And, and even for the entire year, we, we only released 95% of the budget. So we really kept costs under control in, in, you know, a series of ways there. So, one question around this, knowing that we're looking at this $8.5 million, is what is the impact on fund balance? So if these projections hold, we began this year with a $23 million overall fund balance. So, with this, and there's some rounding in here, so pardon the not exact matching up of numbers, but we would, we would end this year with a fund balance of $31.4 million. And what's important to note here, and we'll come back to this after a bit, is that, and we talked about this at the April 8th meeting, that there is no CIP transfer scheduled this year. There was last year, there was the year before, there historically has been. We'll talk about why, but this year, there is no CIP transfer scheduled. Therefore, the entirety of that $8.5 million is able to go to our fund balance. The second piece here, and I, I hit on this earlier in terms of Option 3 that we put out on April 8th, is that we have, again, strategically and intentionally, made the decision and charted courses forward, knowing that we did not want to increase the 21-22 budget, or thereafter, and that we also did not want to use capitalized interest. Neither one of those are a good way of doing business. So what that would have required at that point, as noted earlier, is a one-time payment of $2.37 million. Now, there's actually two installments of that, one in 2022 and another one in 2023, but when I say one-time, I mean that it would not be recurring in, in any way. So by making that $2.37 million payment, we would have been able to avoid capitalized interest, and we would have been able to keep the budget flat. We really expected, after knowing that the turf was also approved, we expected that one-time cash payment number to be something north of $2.37 million. And in fact, it's not. And the reason why it's not is because after the board action on April 8th, we had a bond sale. It was a very favorable bond sale for the district, and so therefore, the number, we're going to stick with that $2.37 number. The current estimate that we have from PFM is below that. But I think it's, it's always safe to err on the side of caution and just, just stick with that $2.37 million number. So what we would do from a fund balance standpoint is set aside that $2.37 million into a committed fund balance. We would do that in a couple months, the final, the final meeting of the fiscal year. And then that money would be pulled out of that committed fund balance, a part of it in '22, 2022, and part of it in 2023. So effectively, after accounting for that payment, our fund balance at the end of this year would be $29.1 million. So we came into this year, again, as you see at the top, at $23 million. We would end technically at, at $31.4, but after accounting for that $2.37 million, effectively, knowing that we are committing that money elsewhere, then effectively, we would have a fund balance of $29.1 million. This next slide, I will apologize for the density of this slide. It's, it's important. If, if this was just a presentation, I don't think this slide would look like this, nor would some others. But, but it's important that we recognize, and I recognize, that not everyone listens to the presentation that's made with the, with the deck. Some people will just access the deck, and so we want, we wanted to also be able to stand on its own. So, so this piece is important. Talked about it already, but want to explain why there is no impact to the general operating budget if indeed Soul Finestone would be approved, and if indeed, we would set aside the $2.37 million for a one-time payment. So, and to expand upon this piece, we're not, when we say using a $2.37 million one-time payment and not increasing the operating budget in '21-22, or in any year thereafter, we're not talking just about Hillcrest, turf, and Soul Finestone. We're also talking in this model about Richborough Elementary still being on that summer 2023 start that we've talked about previously with Option 3, and we're also including in here the CIP backlog that we need to address. We're also talking about the South Tennis Courts, and we also are talking about the, the MBIT projects for which we owe a portion. So, that's important to note, that when we, when we go through this slide and talk about this, this scenario not impacting the general operating budget, that is with all of the current projects, the entire suite of the current projects that are on the horizon. So, the impact that will be seen is, is somewhat obvious, and that is, if we were to do a five-year projection at this point, a new one, or, or look into the future, we know that when you look at that fund balance line, that the fund balance itself will be $2.37 million lower than what it would be if we didn't do any of these projects. So, and again, hopefully, that $2.37 number is going to be somewhere south of there, the current estimate from PFM is. But we know that it's only an estimate, so we're going to stick with that $2.37 from a working standpoint. So then this last piece is indicating that the only manner in which, theoretically anyway, the budget could be impacted, and this is certainly nothing that I would ever recommend to the board, and in fact, would strongly caution against, would be if all of these projects were delayed for several more years. Would that, should that happen, then theoretically anyway, we could actually reduce that $18.8 million debt service line item. I don't think doing so would be really fiscally sound, and certainly not sound from a physical plant, facilities standpoint. We know that Soul Finestone in particular is the oldest building and the most concerning building that we have in the district. We've talked about that over the past month or so. And the one thing that we don't want to do is have issues pop up with that building that we need to sink money into it that's not planned. And the board knows this. If you look in the CIP binder, there's nothing in there for Soul Finestone, because this renovation project has been, has been scheduled, just like there's nothing in there for Hillcrest, and there's nothing in there for Richborough, because we're waiting for those renovations. So, the one thing that we don't want to do is find ourselves in a position where we need to invest money into that school, into that facility, only to undo some of that work when the renovation comes around. And, and if we're talking about several years, that is not a remote possibility. In fact, there's, there's a probability associated with it. So, when you look at the age and condition of that building, we're talking about a boiler system that's oil-fired. One boiler is 32 years old. Another one, if you can believe it, is actually 52 years old. We have a 1951 boiler room that floods on us. And then really, three of the main just functional systems in that building, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, are all very much at the end of their useful life. We're not talking about a 30-year-old set of systems and infrastructure that needs to be renovated, which is the cadence that we sometimes operate on. We're talking about systems in this particular building that are considerably older in, in many cases, and considerably in worse condition in many cases. And then the other piece that we have to be mindful of isn't just today and tomorrow, but several tomorrows from now. We always want to plan for today and, and well into the future. So, we know that, at least as I sit here this evening, as I look out to 2030 or thereabouts, this, the, the scope of projects that we're talking about, Hillcrest, the turf, Soul Finestone, Richborough L, tennis, the CIP backlog, I would love to see a stadium at some point in South, because I think those kids deserve to have the experiences that come with the stadium. But we're not looking at anything major in the district until 2030 or thereabouts. But we know that when that time comes, Newtown L is, is going to be needed, and both high schools are going to be at a point where significant work is needed. So, not due to the current scope that we're looking at, but by looking down the road, a decade or close to a decade down the road, we do know that we're going to have to gradually increase that $18.8 million in the, in the debt service line item. Again, it's not because of any of these current projects, but it's so that we don't experience a spike, the taxpayers of the district, the district itself, once we need to tend to Newtown L, and both high schools, and any other projects that might be required thereafter. All right, Mr. Frederickson? These next couple slides, I want to share from a more global standpoint, because it fits into a lot of this work. So our long-term, long-term budgetary goals can be summed up, you know, certainly not all-encompassing, but the main pieces with these, with these six aspects. So one is to annually achieve zero deficit budgeting. And we'll talk about deficit budgeting and zero deficit budgeting on the next slide. Two is to build the annual CIP costs, that $3 million, or at least $3 million, to build that into the general fund budget. So as, instead of waiting to see what the end-of-year balance is and hoping that we have surplus, that we're actually building that $3 million into the budget. That's, that's how we want to operate fiscally, and right now, with the draft 21-22 budget and the proposed budget that the board will take action on this evening, $3 million for CIP work is in the budget for the 21-22 school year, and I hope that we're able to keep it that way. We also want to see bond rating increases. Right now, we are rated AA. We want to get to AAA. There is one step in between, AA+. And probably the biggest factor of all that influences that bond rating is fund balance. So, that needs to be something that the board keeps in mind, not just this evening, but certainly as we move forward in a, in a more global sense as well. And then, obviously, we're here to teach kids. This is, this is our mission. This is our reason for being. And so we have our eye, as the board knows, and as much of the community knows, on a few different programmatic enhancements for our kiddos. So one of those is we, we very much want to add a fifth special at the elementary level that has a STEM focus to it. We also very much want to see later school start times. The research on that is clear and convincing. And I think a lot of our students have experienced that for themselves with some of the virtual days that we've had over the past year or so. We're also still looking at that modified block high school schedule, and the Rock Block, that 60-minute lunch-and-learn opportunity as well. And then the final piece up there, I, I can't keep this out, is, is the financial literacy course. All of this work is part of our strategic plan. And so, part of our, our, our vision, part of our strategic work has to be building a roadmap for these things to occur. Now, before those things can occur, we've got to get to the point of zero deficit budgeting. We have to have the CIP in there. But I, I'm really optimistic about the progress that we have made to date and are poised to continue making. Five is critically, critically important. This school district, over the past number of years, over the past couple of decades, has really seen kind of a roller coaster of, of tax increases. We've gone anywhere from 0% in a given year to over 12% in a given year. And I'm a firm believer, we're firm believers, that slow and steady wins the race when it comes to this. So, we don't want to be living at whatever the Act 1 index is. We, we want to be below that, and we want below that to be plenty sufficient for us to sustain educational excellence and operational excellence. And we believe that we're on the pathway to be able to do just that. And then number six, again, kind of gets into the Newtown L and the high schools, making sure that we have a plan in place to address those future capital needs. Mr. Frederickson? All right. So I promised you the zero deficit budgeting is on this next slide. And this is, this is really important global work that we're doing as a district. So, we have had a budgeted deficit for a number of years. There's been a lot of talk about it recently. The reality is that we have had it for multiple decades. We, we've been, we've been pulling up a lot of history in the district from a budgeting standpoint, and we know that, that at least 18 of the past 19 years, school years, that the district has had a budgeted deficit. Meaning that a certain level of expenditures is planned for that year, and we're not expecting that much revenue. So, if, if the budget comes in flat, then we would have to pull from the fund balance in order to make up for that deficit at the end of the year. So, it's not, certainly not the way we want to continue doing business if we don't have to. And you can see that over these past 18 years, or 18 of the past 19 years, that this deficit has ranged really anywhere from $1 million to over $6 million. And that $6.4 million deficit wasn't all that long ago. It was five years ago. In the, in the '15-'16 school year, since then, you can see that for the next four years, we were fairly flat in terms of 4.3, 4.2, 4.1, 4.4, and then we pivoted. And this is the work that we have committed ourselves to get this down to a zero deficit budget. So we made a big stride towards that a year ago by getting the budgeted deficit down to $3 million. Our goal this year is to get that deficit down to $1.5 million. I don't know for sure if we'll be able to get there. At minimum, we want to see it being something south of $2 million. But we want to continue to make strides to get that down to a zero deficit budget. And what's important to note is that while we're aiming to get this deficit down to $1.5 million for the upcoming 21-22 school year, that is with building in, as we talked about, the $3 million for CIP. It's building in $500,000 for future technology needs, and that's important, because remember, we spent a few hundred thousand dollars this past year on going one-to-one, and all those devices, their lifecycle is going to elapse at the same time in about devices, their lifecycle is going to elapse at the same time in about five years. So what we don't want is a budgetary spike just to break even programmatically in five years, so it is prudent for us to build slow and steady along the way. And it's not just Chromebooks, but we're talking about projection boards and all kinds of other instructional technology as well. And then the other piece that we have in the 2122 budget is about a $900,000 potential increase for charter school tuition. So we have changed the structure of our budgeting in rather substantial ways, and while doing so, we are working to get that budgeted deficit down, hopefully to 1.5 million, certainly something south of 2 million. Mr. Fredrickson? And one of the ways that we do that is by controlling expenses. So I talked a bit about how we did that this year. So what I want to do, just for a couple moments here, is talk about how we've done that for the past decade. So you look at that first line, and you wonder what I'm talking about, because you see, over the past 10 years, the district's budget has gone up by 47.4 million, and you say, hey, Fraser, why don't you control your expenses in the district? But let's break down that 47.4 million dollars. As you can see there, 30.6 million of that, almost two-thirds of that overall increase, is due strictly to mandates that come from Harrisburg in terms of the retirement system, Peasars, as you may know it by. That's nothing that this school board or this school district can control. Those rates are set in Harrisburg by the Peasars Board, and all public school districts in the state live by those. So you can see the increase. It's quite dramatic and quite alarming. We went from 9.2 million 10 years ago to 39.8 million in the current school year, and you see the accompanying increase. It's really mind-boggling. And the way that looks from a percentage standpoint is the district portion was 8.65% 10 years ago, and now it is the whole way up to 34.51%. So what that means, for every dollar that an employee makes, we have to add 34.51 cents. Now, we end up getting reimbursed for half of that, but nonetheless, you see what we actually pay and what that increase looks like. It is staggering, and it is a huge portion of the increase that we see. Just like any other business, we have increased healthcare, we have other required items that also increase. And then you get to the portion of our budget. You'll hear talked about in board meetings as the 300 to 900 items. Not all of that, but a lot of that, we actually have control over as a district. And the reason why I say not all of it is because you have pieces in there that are service agreements that have natural increases in them from one year to the next. The cost of fuel, obviously, is something that we all deal with. But when you take a look at what we can actually control in total over the past decade, those expenditures have gone up by 4.5 million total in 10 years. So 450,000 per year for an average annual increase of only 0.23%. And again, you can see some of the items that we're talking about there: fuel, service contract increases, rising special education costs, transportation falls into that, and then, of course, technology, textbooks, all other instructional supplies that we have in the district. Really, it's anything besides salaries and benefits in the district. So feel very good about our ability and the work that we've done to control those expenditures. And, Mr. Fredrickson, if we can go to the next slide to kind of just nail this point home. When you look at this over the past 25 years, like I said, we've been doing a lot of work in pulling up past budgets and looking at trends. So one of these is the five-year increments, five different sets of five-year increments of actual expenditure increases. So from year one to year five in any of these five-year increments, and you can see what the overall expenditure increase has been. I'm very proud of the fact that over the past five years, over the past 10 years, over the past 15, you see the discipline that this school district has had. And when you take a look at from 1516 to 1920, of course, we haven't included the current school year yet because we do still have two-plus months left, but the fact that, you know, we are, we're below where the previous five, three-year periods were, I think, is something that we should all feel good about and feel proud of while continuing to maintain the high academic standards that we have, knowing that, hey, what a buck could buy in January of 2000, today you need a buck 57 to buy that same thing. And yet, we've been able to keep these costs in a very controlled manner. All right, Mr. Fredrickson, last slide. So getting back to the topic at hand, what I want to present and leave you with here before we get into board discussion is a rationale to approve Soul Finestone and a pathway to approve Soul Finestone. So as we've talked about, Soul Finestone is the oldest building that we have in the district. It is the most concerning building that we have in the district. I don't want to see this building fail, and I worry that any kind of a significant delay will result in failure of this building, which could do a couple of different things. One, of course, is a good interrupt instruction, teaching and learning in the school, and two is I have no interest in spending bad money. I mean, we just showed on the previous two slides how disciplined we've been. We don't want to be spending good money after bad money, meaning we don't want to have to fix a system, an outdated antiquated system, pour money into that that isn't budgeted for, only to reverse that work or undo that work or modify that work when the building gets renovated. I don't know that that's good business, and we're interested in, obviously, running a good financial business. This particular project is different from the other schools that we're talking about and have talked about. Hillcrest is a one-year project. Richborough L is a one-year project. So if approved, Soul Finestone would begin this summer. Richborough L wouldn't begin until the summer of 2023, but yet Soul Finestone and Richborough L would both end at the same time. They would both end in the summer of 2024. So when we talk about the systems that are in this building, the infrastructure of this building, we just need to keep in mind that, hey, not everything's going to be fixed in a year. We're talking about a 36-month process to work the whole way through this building, since this is going to be a pure phased project. Another consideration, of course, is what would bids look like down the road? Chances are, if we had to rebid this project today, we would see something higher than what we've already seen. We know that the cost of steel has gone up. We know that the labor pool is somewhat diminished. But Mr. Taylor, sitting behind me here, has also projected out what we would anticipate a year from now, what we would anticipate two years from now, so you can see those numbers, 3 million, 4.7 the following year. Again, just to reiterate this point, the pathway here from a fiscal standpoint, so as not to increase the operating budget and so as to not use cap I, because we also do not view that as sound business, we would use 2.37 million, hopefully something south of that, but let's call it 2.37 million as a one-time payment, two installments, to be able to avoid either of those other two financial approaches. Do also need to point out that, again, we are looking for that bond rating increase. I mentioned earlier that fund balance is probably the most significant component that goes into a bond rating increase, so we would be taking 2.37 million out of fund balance in order to do this. My concern, and the reason why I'm comfortable with my recommendation, is that I think to get not just one, but then ultimately a second bond rating increase, we would need, that's going to be, that's going to not just be a year or a couple of years, that's going to be, that's going to be a few years, and I've already expressed my concern with delaying this particular project for several years. And again, I mentioned earlier that this is a year unlike previous years where we do not need to transfer 3 million for CIP work at the end of this year. And the reason, just to connect the dots for you, is this summer, the summer of 2021 CIP projects, those were funded with end-of-year positive balance or end-of-year surplus from the 2019-20 school year. And that's how it's always worked. You end the year, you get audited, you close those books, and then you decide how much money is going to go for the next summer's work. So the summer 2021 CIP transfer occurred the better part of a year ago, and then as we look ahead to the summer of 2022 CIP projects, again, we have that right now built into the 2021-22 draft budget. So if there's ever a time to, if there's ever a year to make a 2.37 million, you know, something less than the 3 million even, cash payment or put it into a committed fund balance so that a year and two years from now, we can make that cash payment, this is the year to do it. This is the one fiscal year that we have that, again, as long as we're able to keep that 3 million in the 2122 budget, this is the one year, and this is the only year, that we do not need to funnel money to CIP work. And again, just as a reminder, with doing so, the effective end-of-year fund balance would be projected to be 29.1. For the next year, for the next two years, it would be higher than 29.1. It would go down a little bit when we make that first payment in 2022, and then the rest of that 2.37 would be paid in 2023. So by the end of that, and assuming no other fund balance changes, over the next couple of years, you net that out to a fund balance of 29.1, again, knowing that we started this year with a 23 million fund balance. So, Mr. Solomon, that's the information I have to present. Obviously, I have, we have Mr. Taylor and Mr. Stone here as well to help answer questions, but we're happy to listen to board discourse on this and answer any questions as best we can.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Fraser. And with that being said, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Stone, was anything missed in this presentation that is coming to mind that may save a board member a question to you or something you want to drive home from your perspective that Dr. Fraser may have been a little light on or something like that?
The only thing I would clarify, I thought the presentation was excellent. The upcoming projects also include MM Welsh Elementary School down the road. My apologies to the Welsh community.
Mr. Stone, anything from you, sir?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. All right, so with that being said, the board received this deck earlier. We've had some time to review it. I know for me, it's a lot. I'm really looking forward to the conversation this evening with my colleagues. This was a tough decision a couple of weeks ago, and I'm sure it will be a tough decision as we move through this evening and beyond. So looking for someone to open the conversation, please? Don't jump in at once.
Three-second rule.
Three-second rule. Good. What in the alca, Mr. Aldaga?
Sure. It's a real quick one, and it's probably just get it off the top of my head, because I would like to go through slide by slide and ask questions. Great presentation, Dr. Fraser. It really was. I think my favorite slide was the, you know, the long-term budgetary goals. I really appreciated that. So one thing, Richborough Elementary School, you know, we received a lot of concerning emails from parents regarding their school, along with the other two schools that we're looking at doing, what we're going to do. So I'd like to know and explain, if you could, to them, maybe even with the other members' input, why Richborough Elementary School is, you know, pushed to 2023. I can tell you I chose Hillcrest first, so you don't have to ask me, but coming from the administration, I'd like your, you know, information and decision-making process to add some color. And also, you know, are we skipping a year between the two projects, the two one-year projects, by starting in 2023? And just, let's get it all out there for everybody to understand the thought process so there's no questions later.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Aldaga. So yes, there is a one-year break in between the two projects. The reason for the one-year pause in between the projects is that 2.37 million number, I don't know exactly what it would be, but it would certainly be higher than 2.37 million. So when we then look at sequence of projects, the sequence that we've really had since we developed this plan, three years ago maybe at this point, was always Soul Finestone, then Hillcrest, then Richborough. And the difference, the fundamental difference between Soul Finestone and really either Hillcrest or Richborough is the age of the building and the overall condition of the infrastructure of the buildings. The piece that, and we've talked about this in past meetings, the piece, though, that we have to be really mindful of with both Hillcrest and Richborough, isn't necessarily Hillcrest and Richborough. They're both due, but they're more on that 30-year cadence that I referenced earlier, but it's the swing space. It's the former Richborough Middle. So just like we don't want Soul Finestone to, you know, to give us problems that either interrupt teaching and learning or cause us to use money in ways that isn't a good use of money, we have that same desire at Richborough Middle School. So as we look between those two oldest and most concerning schools, Soul Finestone is the most concerning. Richborough Middle probably isn't too far behind, but it is what it is behind. And again, going back to that 2.37 number and not wanting to increase that number, in my estimation and consistent with my recommendation, I do recommend that one-year pause between when Hillcrest starts and when Richborough L starts. Originally, Richborough was going to be done in the, what, in the '22-'23 school year. So it's a one-year pause, which is the one-year pause that we put into effect last year. So I feel as superintendent, thinking about teaching and learning, thinking about facilities, and thinking about the financial end of this, I feel comfortable with that recommendation for those reasons. Again, if we wanted to do Richborough L in the summer of '22 to start it then, we would have to go back to PFM and have them give us a new number. But I know that that number is not going to be slightly higher, it's going to be pretty considerably higher, and I don't know that that's worth it.
Thank you so much. And that was an administrative decision, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I'll come back to me. Thanks.
You will. Dr. Thorwood, or?
If you don't mind if I just piggyback on Mr. Aldaga.
Block, please.
If we continue, you know, if we continue to perform more favorable to budget, does that change your thinking? Do we have the ability to pull it forward if we're financially able to, as long as we're achieving everything else?
We would.
Okay.
Yeah, as we, I mean, we're talking about a year from now, 11 months from now. So if things are looking good and the board is of the mindset, or the administration is of the mindset, to recommend an acceleration of that, we could certainly take a look at that. It's not going to change the fact, though, that the 2.37 number, or whatever it is, is going to go up.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm just saying, hey, you know, the key bit for me is we've had a plan, we've worked the plan, and that's been successful, and we've, you know, accelerated where we can, so.
I have a quick question.
Mr. Barlock.
Just that came about, so with Richborough Elementary, if we're just talking about finances, wouldn't it make more sense to do Richborough Elementary over Soul Finestone due to the savings that we have with the joint bid?
My worry is with the Soul Finestone physical plan. So delaying that, you know, delaying that a year is one thing, delaying it two years, we just get to a point where we're playing with house money, and that makes me really uncomfortable as a superintendent who wants to see continuity of teaching and learning and... learning and doesn't want to need to spend good money after bad money. That, that facility, if, if anyone, and I know some on the board have, have, have gone into those boiler rooms, that, that building isn't going to hold out for us for another, you know, five or six years.
I, I understand that, and I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm just thinking about solely financial. This is, that, that was the discussion we had, because we had a, we had a favorable bid for the two buildings being bid together. So we're jettisoning half of that, right, by the board approved Hillcrest but not Richborough. There's a lot of emphasis on long-term financial goals. I too appreciate that. I'll have questions about that later, but just for purely financial, wouldn't it make sense to do Richborough and Hillcrest together? If we're just looking at the finance, finances?
Yeah, I, I, I don't believe it does. I mean, none of us can obviously know what, what tomorrow holds, or what two or three years from now holds. But I, I have significant enough concerns with that Sulphine Stone facility that, that making the decision to focus on Hillcrest and Richborough now and put off Sulphine Stone is, is going to end up costing us more money than we're going to have to put into Sulphine Stone and then have that really be, I, I don't know what the right term is, but have, it's money that we won't get back, because we're going to have to replace those systems, change those systems, and, and that just, I, I can't, I can't wrap my head around that.
Doug, what was the savings? Was it $4 million from Richborough? Is it split evenly? I think it was $8 million together.
Yeah, you're, you're right. It was the combined bid that saved us the money, but when we awarded the Hillcrest project at the last meeting, we lost the ability to award that combined bid to a different contractor. So those savings aren't as significant as they were when we made that decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I go now?
Yeah, sure. Dr. Thorwart, please.
I'll, I'll get back to the construction in a minute, but perhaps I'm the only one that noticed this. We're talking about 2.37 million dollars. If I'm a staff member out in the district, I see that we gave back 2.3 million dollars this year, and suddenly we found it, and it feels like we found change under the couch cushions and we're running out for ice cream. Maybe we should give it back. I, 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 you know, we pride ourselves on our staff and, and being good employers. We asked for a give-back, we got it. It turns out, we probably didn't need it. Maybe we should give it back. I, I'll stop there for now, but that's, it just strikes me as odd.
Good. Mr. Tate, please.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. This is great news. Thank you, Dr. Fraser. Thank you, Mr. Stone. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This is really great news. It reflects smart and conservative budget planning and management, and I used conservative a week or two ago, and, and I mean that very complimentary. I think that's the right way to approach budgeting, and I think it's borne out here tonight when we see this excellent surplus that we have to work with. So this is really great news. It's also nice to see that revenues didn't decline, that our community came through the pandemic probably better than we expected, which is somewhat comforting. I've said this before, I'll say it again, Sulphine Stone needs to be done. Dr. Fraser pointed out that the boilers are 32 years and 52 years old. The, the boiler room floods, it was built in 1951 as part of the original building, and we went down in there during our visit recently, and that's the most frightening space I have seen in Council Rock, to put it mildly. Council, you know, Sulphine Stone needs to be renovated. And I'll point out again, air conditioning. You know, we owe it to our staff and our students to air-condition every building. There's no way around it. Thirdly, it would be irresponsible not to do Sulphine Stone at this point. It would be Band-Aids and patching that building until we get around to it, and I am very concerned that if we don't do it this year, something unforeseen could happen that could prevent us from doing it next year, and it would get delayed another year. And the figures that we saw in Dr. Fraser's presentation showed if we delay Sulphine Stone one year, we're talking about a cost increase of $3 million. A two-year delay is a cost increase of 4.7 million. So considering it's the oldest building in the district, it's in, candidly, it's in atrocious condition. It's going to be the largest elementary school in our district as of next fall, and the population is not going down. We would be irresponsible not to do Sulphine Stone as soon as possible. And that concludes my comments for now.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Who would like to make a comment next? Mrs. Brooks, please.
Thank you. Dr. Fraser, I want to thank you for this excellent presentation. I'll, I'll get to in a minute how you've just, I mean, I, I wanted Sulphine Stone two weeks ago. You've made it easier for me to continue to support that, so I'll get to that in a minute. But I, I really appreciate this presentation so that the public can really get an understanding about some of the language that we use around the budget, and it gives it a lot of context so that we can talk about the, the fund balance in a, a way that, that is understandable. But, you know, that piece about the impact of Peasars, the numbers on the slides are astonishing, and it really does underscore the, the due diligence of the administration and the board in, in planning and budgeting, because I'm hard-pressed to, to think how we could have been any more conservative and thoughtful in, in how we've approached spending without severely impacting equality education for our students. So I just thank you again for that presentation. I, again, I strongly believe that the right decision was to, to, to include Sulphine Stone renovation in our plan. When we set a strategic plan, a capital plan, it is done after months, years of work. And what we laid out several years ago in our capital plan was very well thought out, and, you know, the pandemic gave us a curveball, and now we have an opportunity with good news in how this year has turned out financially to restore back to, you know, pre-pandemic ways of, of thinking of the district in a positive way and advancing, you know, all the goals that we have set. So I absolutely support the, I, I hope there's board support so that we can reconsider the vote from two weeks ago and, and put that project forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. McKay, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Very similar comments. I also was in favor of the renovations to Sulphine Stone on April 8th, and this presentation tonight, thank you, by the way, it was, it was excellent. This makes the decision, to me, it makes the decision to renovate even just more compelling and, and really possible. As we discussed in depth, and I think very thoughtfully, and considered on April 8th, I think all of my board members expressed concern over the condition of that building and understood the great need that is there. I hope with seeing the numbers and seeing this presentation tonight, I hope that we can come to consensus and find a way to move this along and, and feel as though we're doing it in a physically responsible way. I really encourage my board members to please consider supporting the project, the renovation at Sulphine Stone. And finally, I would, I would just like to comment along the lines of Dr. Thorwart's ideas. When we consider the impact on staff, I know we're all immensely grateful to the concessions made by our staff and appreciative of their sense of, of dedication to our district and camaraderie in trying to make things better within our district always. But when we talk about bargaining issues like wages terms and conditions of employment, the physical plant in which you work is a condition of employment. The fact that we do not have air conditioning in certain buildings still today, or the fact that you're working in a building whose plumbing system is working irregularly at best, or there's concern about flooding. When we talk about the impact budgetarily on our staff, I want us also to think about the impact of working in those buildings every day on our staff and the incredible efforts that they make to make their buildings, their classrooms, their hallways really welcoming and inviting and kid-friendly and superb places for children to learn. But I feel it's our responsibility to also put money into those buildings so that they are safe and healthy and working buildings for that education to occur.
Thank you, Mrs. McKay. Mrs. Marcel, would you, please?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions first. Over the last two weeks, I've had a number of parents reaching out to me regarding the Sulphine Stone construction, and so I just wanted to ask just a few questions that came up in those various conversations. One is for Mr. Taylor, and I know we were speaking earlier today about that, but for some, you know, for some parents, the, the pickup and drop-off line is, you know, depending on the school, you know, a daily struggle, especially now because of all of the measures. We have less students being on the buses every day, and so, so I have heard from some Wrightstown parents that are at Sulphine Stone, they were wondering, you know, if the car line for picking up and dropping off would be somewhat similar to this year, where there are multiple lanes, or if that would change in some way. And I know, Mr. Taylor, that there are some things that maybe haven't been accounted for yet, but I know that that was just a concern that was brought up, and I thought it would be worthwhile to just share if there is a plan. I've heard from a lot of, you know, Wrightstown parents at Sulphine Stone that they appreciate how the, that car line operates now because it is kind of by alphabet, you know, like they've, it's very organized, and I think they do actually a very good job. And so I was wondering if you could maybe just talk a little bit about that, if, if that would be helpful for some parents out there that might be thinking about it.
So you're asking about the traffic and how it will look during the construction versus how it will look permanently, of course, and how it looks today. So right today with COVID, certainly the car lines across the district have become challenged, no question about it. And yes, there's multiple lines at Sulphine Stone, and I'm not sure how the beginning of next year will look. Certainly, we're prepared to exercise a similar process that we see today next year. There will be a staggered, staggered car and bus drop-off and pickup so that we can avoid or eliminate a lot of the congestion that we're seeing, so there'll be a purposeful stagger with defined times, and Mr. Harlan will address that with the, with the staff and community, obviously, if the project moves forward. So there is a plan to address this, and certainly the bigger picture is in about two and a half years, there'll be no major issues on that site again, because we will have a clear and defined parent drop-off and a clear and defined bus drop-off. Separate entrances, ample stacking to address all of the things that are happening now and people are worrying about now. So that is a big part of this project, is an extensive site package that does address that internal stacking and parking and the ability to manage that site the way it should be and make it safer for, for parents, for students, and bus drivers.
Okay, thank you very much. And could you just add to that, you know, if this project moved forward, you know, the type, would there be a forum, or, you know, is there a type of public interaction so that parents and community members could learn more about this?
Sure, absolutely. If, if you recall, just before COVID hit us last year, Colin and I were actually in the cafeteria space to present to the community what the phasing would look like in anticipation of a project that sadly had to be postponed. But we will be back in front. The first thing we will do if this does move forward is have that presentation with the staff so that internally everyone's aware of exactly how it looks and functions, and then we will offer a community meeting where we will come out, present what the plan looks like, how the phasing works, how the construction works, how we interact with neighbors during construction, who to reach during construction, if there's concerns, what do you do, how do we address it, and take any and all questions from community at that meeting. So I'm happy to come out to any appropriately, you know, sized space to meet with the community and have that meeting in person.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. And then I had a question for Dr. Fraser. I've had some parents and community members from Wrightstown that do not have children attending Sulphine Stone. They are currently at Wrightstown Elementary, so they were not moved during redistricting. And I did hear from some of them that they had concerns about Sulphine Stone construction in terms of additional classrooms being added, and they were wondering if they should be concerned about a future redistricting where more students from Wrightstown would potentially get moved up to Sulphine Stone. And so I just wanted to see if you had any comments regarding that, because I think that that, you know, even though redistricting happened before COVID, it's still, I think, fresh in some people's minds, especially as the communities that were affected are, you know, kind of still trying to help the students to, you know, literally, you know, meet other students within their grade level, you know, because COVID has made it harder. So I think that, at least in the Wrightstown community, that this is still a topic that a lot of people are thinking about. So I just wanted to see if you could perhaps comment on that to help them have better understanding of impact to them potentially.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And a couple of things right off the bat. The, the timing of COVID with the timing of redistricting was, was not great. You know, really, it was, we, we started redistricting a couple of falls ago, and then by the, the middle of that March, I mean, we didn't even have one full school year. So some connections were made and bonds formed, but certainly not the way that we anticipated when, when redistricting took place. So, so I think these, these concerns and, and just, you know, the, the overall thoughts are, are ones that, that I have as well, for sure. The second piece, just big picture, is I'll, I'll restate what I said during redistricting in that the goal from a duration standpoint with just district-wide redistricting is to make sure that it sticks for at least seven years. And seven years is important because we want to make sure that any student that starts a school in kindergarten or would be redistricted has a chance to see the whole way through sixth grade and, and certainly not be redistricted again. To the point of your question, this project, the Sulphine Stone, it has nothing to do with any students or any families at Wrightstown, and, and part of the reason why I can say that so strongly is because right now, and I think I have this number spot on, right now Sulphine Stone already has 29 sections. And we talked about it during the capital planning process, that once we get over 30 sections in any given school, now we have space is, space issues and scheduling issues just from a, a specials standpoint. So we are not interested in adding unnecessarily. There, there already might be some growth within the, the new feeder pattern that Sulphine Stone has. But, but the other piece that, it's on our radar, I don't want to call it a plan, per se, but, but the other piece that's on our radar is we want to make sure that all district programs in the district end up in their proper feeder pattern so that when, when our students move from elementary school to middle school, that they are with friends and with kids that they know and have relationships with. So if anything, if we, if we don't see significant growth at Sulphine Stone, which frankly, I hope that we don't, because again, we do already have 29 sections this year, then, then the likelihood, it's, it's far greater likelihood that we would see one of our district programs move to Sulphine Stone as opposed to any redistricting that would go in there. I, I would say that any, any redistricting in the north actually would be far, far more likely to be, to be happening at Newtownell, where we have less sections and we have some open classrooms. open classrooms. But again, I'll go back to my piece I started with, which is seven years minimum is, is what we're looking at. So no, to parents out there, Wrightstown parents out there who, who don't want to see any redistricting, I can assure you that one thing here has nothing to do with the other.
Thank you, Dr. Frazier. I have some other comments, but I want to listen a little bit more to my colleagues. You can come back to me.
Yes, Mr. Bylick, sure.
So I, I haven't really changed my position, well, I haven't changed my position at all. I've been very concerned about the, any additional expenditures. I'm really, really happy. This is good news. And I, Dr. Frazier, I do think you did a good job, a very good job on the presentation, and I think, I think it's all very good news. Sulphine Stone definitely needs to be done, as do the other schools. It's not something we can put off for a long period of time. Like you said, the risks are exponentially, just continue to increase. I do think, as I always have, that we should wait a year, or at least, you know, I think that we should take this opportunity with this surplus, get our house in order and plan The, the $8 million comes from, as you said, reduced expectations significantly, salary concessions, and I'm very happy that our community fared better than most, or some at least. I worry, and I, and I appreciate your, your objectives, the long-term goals. I worry about a couple of things. First of all, I worry that we don't have five-year projections on this new information. So it, $8 million sounds like a lot, but in the scheme of our budget, it's not. $34 million, 50, 50, or $31 million, $54 million is a lot. You add on the debt service on that, I think the factor is about 60% you have to add on to that. That's a lot more money in uncertain times. So I don't want to, I, I, you know, you talked about fund balance, and that's a very good point. One of the goals is to increase our bond rating. Increasing our bond rating will save a significant amount of money on all these projects over time. And I asked Mr. Stone to take a look, have PFM take a look at that, and it's projected to be anywhere from $1.4 million to $2.1 million. So if we do this expenditure, we risk not getting those increases in bond ratings because we won't be adding to fund balance, we'll be reducing fund balance and perhaps escalating that reduction in fund balance. So my feeling is, is that if we had the five-year projections up here in front of us, which I believe we should have for this discussion, it feels really imprudent and a bit reckless not to have that, those five-year projections for significant decisions that we're making at some point in the near future. So I'm hoping before a decision's made, we can have those five-year projections. And I don't know why we couldn't. But if we're sitting here looking at those five-year projections, instead of our fund balance being negative of 2024, and now it's negative of 2025, well, that's good. That's a good, that's good progress. Still bad for the overall health of the district, but that's good progression. So I think it would make sense to delay this a year, get our, like I said, at least get through our budget process. We're not even through our budget process. We don't know if there's going to be CIP money in, in, in our budget or not. You've mentioned it a couple of times, so it makes me concerned that it won't be there. And then, and then that's more money that comes out of fund balance to fund those CIPs, very important projects. But I'm worried about our bond rating. I have to believe that, that using this, these funds for this project could potentially decrease or keep our bond rating the same as instead of the bond rating agencies, and Mr. Stone correct, can correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like the, the, the bond rating agencies probably would like to see that our, our assumptions were, were good. We ended up with a surplus. We reduced our revenues, our revenue expectations, so that worked in our favor. I wish we could give the salary concessions back, but we do have to give them back. I'll come back to that in a moment. But I think the bond rating agencies would look at, okay, well, now we have got a $29 million surplus, so we're heading in the right directions with all the different things that we've done. Five-year projections, what we didn't, which we never had before, and we should have for this decision. The Financial Advisory Committee, all the good work that Mr. Stone's done, and all the great work we've done budgeting along the way. You're absolutely right. Keeping those, keeping those expenditures steady is really a difficult task, especially when Peasers keeps just running right up the back of us. You know, this is putting more weight on this, in this rock sack every single year. And this board and this district has done a very, very good job with that. But this just, again, just feels terribly imprudent. And, and as, as we're talking about salaries, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we, we have to give those, that, those concessions back up to a certain point, right? I think the actual overall permanent savings is about $500,000 because we have catch-up provisions with these salary concessions, do we not?
Can you state that another way?
So our, our employees said we're going to take a freeze, right, on, on, on increases, right? Take a freeze or they don't, they don't take their steps.
It's not a total freeze, but it's a near.
Okay.
And for, so for some folks, it is a freeze, and for other folks, it's a near total freeze.
So we have increases coming, and then we have kind of a, it's, I don't want to say double increase because that doesn't sound right, but we, we do have to catch up on what we didn't pay our staff, correct?
I don't know that I would free, I, I understand what you're saying. I don't know that I would freeze it that way. So what our staff has done in, in this, so CRESPA, we already had salary concessions pre-pandemic, so, so they're, they're separate from this. So from a CREA standpoint and from an administrative standpoint, there are 18 months of salary concessions, so it's the entirety of this year and then the first six months of the upcoming fiscal year. And then what happens on the midpoint, which the midpoint is different for CREA as opposed to administrators, but that midpoint of the year, folks are, the term that I would use is made whole. So it would be as if there was never a freeze. So, so it's not, it's not, I mean, it's, it's real money that people have, have, you know, made concessions for. So this year, over these 12 months, between myself, the rest of the administrative team, all teachers and professional staff in the district, it's just about 2.5 million. And then for the first six months of the coming year, it's just, it's right around 2 million. So a total of 4.5 million. So those are real savings to the district. We don't, there's no, you know, giving back or, or anything like that. But what was important to me as we went into this is that when those concessions were made by our teachers in particular, who have, you know, step movement, as you all well know, is that this wouldn't be something that is permanent for them in terms of always being behind for the rest of their career. So it was important to me that folks were made whole at some point. A typical concession is 12 months. So the, the agreement that we struck was, hey, let's do 18 months, but then make sure that at the 18-month mark, the folks are made whole.
That's, and that's what I meant. You put that very, very well, and the made whole makes, it makes more sense. Thank you. But there are a list of things that, you know, it's about $5.4 million of savings or concessions or adjustments that we're never going to see again, and these things concern me. And that's why I would like to see, before this board makes any decisions, I'd like Mr. Stone to come back to us with that spreadsheet that shows, given the assumptions that we went through on last Thursday, so at our finance committee meeting we went through, and this board all agreed on assumptions for revenue, expenditures, and tax increases. So we, we kind of halfway tied a hand behind your back because we said as a board, we don't want to go to Act 1 index, we're going to bring it down. So I don't know what that number is going to look like, but somewhere between, you know, the low assumption that Mr. Stone had and the high Act 1 index. So revenues are going to come down in those assumptions. So I'm concerned, and I want, I'd like to see before this board makes a decision on this, what this, what these five-year projections are. And again, I hope I'm wrong, but I think the risks of a disastrous situation on the, in the building of Sulphine Stone over the next 12 months or the next 11 months now, since you'd be rebuilding it a little earlier, are much lower than a disastrous situation in five years financially. Because I, I, I know people don't like these words, but I, it alarms me, the financial situation we're in. You know, I, I put a lot of time and effort and hard work into this district, like many of you around the table have, over the last eight years, we've made a lot of progress, and I, I just hate to see it get taken away by a bad decision. And I feel like this is a bad decision. And I feel like we don't have all the information. I feel like we're really being pressed for time. We had a, a finance committee meeting last week, just last Thursday, and I would have loved to have this information then, and I'd like to hear more about why we didn't have that information then, because we could have had a more public discussion about it during that period of time. But I, I just, I'm, 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 you know, asking my board to just delay a year. I, I don't want multi-years, but just delay a year. We're also putting a heavy burden on board members who aren't even seated at this table yet. They don't even get a say in what, in these massive projects we have to deal with, and that's not fair either. So there's, there's, there's at least two of us, maybe four of us, who aren't going to be here next year. And you're not even giving those new people even an opportunity for say. So I would ask, delay a year. I don't think there's a tremendous risk to Sulphine Stone, but there's a tremendous risk to the district if we do move forward. And I'll stop there for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bylick. Dr. Thorwart, please.
Mark brought up timing, and my project manager's going to come out here. Mr. Taylor, we tried to switch the finance meeting and the facilities meeting around, and we couldn't because of timing. You needed to get these bids done and processed. So two weeks ago, two weeks ago? Yeah. We formally rejected these bids, and as far as I'm aware, by what, the 19th, you delivered the rejections to the contractors, correct?
The board formally rejected the bids. No formal letters went to anyone, but yes, contractually, their contracts were, you know, the bids were rejected.
Okay, so continuing on that, so these contractors, because of that, have no idea that we're even talking about this, or certainly shouldn't have any idea about that we're talking about this at this time, right?
No, Dr. Thorwart, that's not correct. So as I had written to the board previously, and part of this will go back to Mr. Bylick's question, which I had written to the board, I guess, last Friday, explaining the, the sequence around when we had this information and why it didn't come before the board last Thursday evening. So part of this was, and I had, I had written this to the board, I believe, in that same email last Friday, that the only way this would be even a possibility would be if Doug went back to the contractors, the general contractor, the primes, the sobs, and got a commitment from them to honor that, their bids. So Doug was able to get that on, what, Monday? I guess it was, Monday morning of this week. And so we do have that commitment. Certainly doesn't lock us in to anything, but it's nice to know that they've made that commitment to us. And Doug, I don't want to speak for you, but I know that when Doug approached the general contractor, the primes, and, and down on from there, that it was, look, we don't know what's going to happen, but there is, you know, new information, and we're going to bring this back to the board, and we want to know whether you would be able to honor this. Otherwise, it's not even, it's a moot point. It's not even worth bringing it back to the board because it would be a dead issue regardless of this new information.
And that's correct. There is nothing in writing, there's nothing formalized, that they are held to any agreement. It was a discussion. If they were, if these bids were reconsidered, would they have interest in holding the numbers that they provided? I said, I don't know that the chance is very high, or if at all, but I need to know if we're going to have those discussions, if that is a possibility. So we're not wasting your time either. And, and they, you know, all, the four primes, five primes actually for Sulphine Stone, all agreed that they would respect those original numbers if the board were to reconsider.
And I guess, and maybe it's just me, I'm troubled by the fact that I just found that out now. So that troubles me. Really, it does. We, as a board, voted to reject, and it. I'll stop.
I just, Dr. Frazier, I just had a quick question. If board members had questions about the contracts, would it make sense for us to potentially talk about that in executive session?
I'll defer to Ms. Summer on that.
Um, there was just some questions about the contracts and our process after rejecting a bid, and I just wasn't sure if it was something that needed to be discussed in executive session or not.
Not at this point.
Okay.
Short answer.
Okay, okay, you'll let us know. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Doggo, please.
I'm a little confused. Took me a moment because you asked about executive session, it gained my thought. I'm confused where Mr. Bylick asked if we could combine the two bids of, of Richborough and Sulph, and, and Hillcrest, and it was told to us that we've already, those builds have already been rejected, that, that that's no longer on the table. But we're, we're saying that we, we are going to go with Sulphine Stone, that, that, that's, that's still on the table, but not Richborough. So option whatever that was back, it wasn't part of the three, but it was one of the original proposals. Maybe it was not asked, or it's just no good anymore. So we already have one bid that's, that's no good, and we have other bids that are possibly good, and we're going to move forward with them. So I just want to make that comment. You can make clear, you can, you can clear that up. But the second part, which really hits home to me when I, when I got this information on Friday, was, well, are you going to be able to go back to the same bidders that we were basically being urgent, there was an urgency, we've moved meetings up to, and there was a lot of discussion back and forth, and to be very, very straightforward, I was taken back with the way that was presented. So we basically said, we, these people have a living, they have to get, we have, they have mouths to feed, and, and we're, you know, we have to rush. And I'm like, hey, you know, we just got a hundred-page presentation, and we're being asked to make these big decisions. So I'm concerned that we went and we, we made a very tough decision, a lot of tough decisions that night, and made it clear to the administration that we weren't moving forward with these bids, yet no rejection letters were given. It wasn't formalized, but you can come back today, and when one board member says, hey, well, what about, maybe we should combine those two projects and do it that way, we're already told that that's dead in the water. This, to me, is very concerning, and I'm going to give you a chance to, to explain. And, and I know you always have a good explanation, but these, that, that's one thing. There's one other thing that basically, I think there were some members of the board that came to the administration, or it's not really told if they're board members or not, but several people came and asked for updated numbers on certain projects, and one of the projects was Sulphine Stone being relocated to a, to a new site and, and numbers put on there. And that concerns me from an operational standpoint, because I remember during redistricting, when I went and I was trying to make, ask for different scenarios from, from the former K-12 director about how can we make this work for the people that I'm, you know, advocating for at that moment? And it was told to me, I need five board members to come back before, so I sit there on the phone and I bang my head against the wall trying to get four people to support my idea to just get the numbers, and I don't get the numbers. But then several people can come when it comes to a $30 million construction job and get that information put out to the board, resources made, man hours put into it, but I don't feel that I get that same type of, you know, so you need, you need, you need five. But other people, so I'm not going to ask who, I'd like to, but I'm just very frustrated with the process and this whole thing, that we're revisiting this and we're not looking at the five-year projections, and here I am going to ramble through all my points before I give you a chance to talk. So I'm going to stop there, and then I want to finish what I was saying. But I do want to know, how do we reconcile this for me? How it was so urgent that we get this done, that we pushed the meetings up, and I said, I really want to see how this budget's working out before we go, and if we went on the regular schedule, we may have had the time and seen what we see today. That's the one point. That's the one point. And I really have two more points to make, but I'm going to give you an opportunity to speak.
All right. Let me jump in first, Mr. Taylor, because I know that you'll provide the sum and substance of this. Mr. Hidalgo, I think with every point that you just made, every single one of them are apples to oranges, all of them. And I want, I want the public to know that, because this administration has taken a beating over this past year, in many cases unfairly. And I'm not suggesting that you are doing that. I just, I need to defend this administration, and I will defend this administration. Mr. Taylor, can you specifically address those issues, please?
Yes. The, the Hillcrest Elementary School award was awarded to the contractor that did not submit the combined bid number. So once you awarded those contracts, you are committed to moving forward with those projects. So Hillcrest group of contractors are awarded a project, they're moving forward. They're, they're now moving forward with signing up their subs and procuring materials and doing everything they need to do. The combined bid was submitted by a different contractor, so there is, there's no way to take a project away that you've already awarded to somebody and say, hey, we've changed our mind, unless you want to pay them. So if you wanted to cancel the four contracts for Hillcrest, which we can do. So if you, if as a board, there's five people that say, we now want to cancel Hillcrest, pay the contractors for any time they've expended, from when we approved it to what they've done, to the point where you cancel, we could pay them for that time, and then we could award to the combined bid for Hillcrest and Richborough. But right now, we're obligated to the four contractors that we've awarded contracts to, and financially, whatever they've spent to the point where you decide to cancel their contracts.
And Mr. Taylor, before you go on, just to make sure that that's clear to the community, that is the fundamental difference between Sulphine Stone. Sulphine Stone obviously hasn't been awarded to any contractor, because Sulphine Stone was rejected two weeks ago. One half of that joint bid, the Hillcrest half, was approved. It was approved to a different contractor than the contractor who submitted the joint bid. So at this point, for us to, the, the reason why I am saying, and the reason why Mr. Taylor is saying that Sulphine Stone is still a possibility with this new news, but the joint bid is not a possibility, is we would literally need to revoke a contract that has already been awarded to an actual contractor, primes, and subcontractors extended out. So that's the, that's the apples-to-oranges piece, and the fundamental difference there.
So the urgency for the projects, the Sulphine Stone project, if the board does decide at some point to award Sulphine Stone this year to the group of contractors that submitted these bids, there is contractually a notice to proceed date of April 19th. So they are expecting that the board come to them by April 19th, give them a contract, and say, go to town. There are many, many, many milestone completion dates from April 19th through October of '24 to finish this project. Many interim milestones. The first one, and the key one, for the first phase, is obviously getting the temporary classrooms in place, the asbestos abatement in the first phase, and other summer work completed. There's some emergency stairs that go in, there's some site work. All of that needs to be done before the staff and students return. For every day we award this project past April 19th, we owe the contractors a day at the back end of that first phase. So my point is, and as equally as important as it was when I said it before, it's far more critical than it is, than it was then, is that we, if we're going to do something, we need to make that decision, because we're going to, the other piece, and I didn't discuss this with the contractors, but if there is a serious want to move forward, the question for them is, will they honor the original contract under the terms and conditions of the original bid? Meaning, will you meet the timelines that are in here as well as your budget? They've already said, contractually, they would, they would meet those, the financial commitment that they provided to us. Will they meet the timeline? That's another discussion. I didn't have an in-depth discussion about the entire process. If not, then, then you have to award them a contract, and you put a change order with it. It's a no-cost change order, but the only way to change time in a contract is with the change order. So you award the contract a no-cost extension of time, and say, plus five days, or plus seven days, whatever it is that we award this past the April 19th timeline. So if that happens, and they, they then are contractually, contractually, they have until, if the completion date was August 15th, it's now, if it's seven days, it's August 22nd. Now, there's a chance that when we award this, if we award this, the contractors say, we'll honor the timeline, we'll make up the time, we'll put in the, we'll put in the hours at night, we'll put in some extra time, we'll meet your timeline, and we'll move forward. And if they don't, then we have to talk about that, that seven-day blip, or however many day blip it is, you know, in the schedule, to adjust at the end of the first phase. After that, the schedule holds as it does in the contract. So that's why it's critical.
Well, thank you, because it's very clear, and I appreciate Dr. Fraser speaking to the double bid and, and the fact that we awarded Hillcrest, so that, that makes some sense. If we wanted to do both, I think we would figure out how to do it if we wanted to, because where there's a will, there's a way. As far as the, as far as what you were just saying about the urgency, see, I didn't remember that, like, oh, we need the project to make sure we stay on that timeline so that we can go to school next year on time. That makes a lot of sense. That's not what I recall remembering the most. I really was looking at the urgency from the, from the employ, you know, from those guys. We owe it to them, and to get this done, you know, to get them a decision sooner. That's just what's laid in my mind, if you, if you understand. And so I'm going to move on to the next one, and Dr. Fraser, we can always talk about the other items later, but I, I appreciate it, the response. The second thing, I just want to kind of reiterate about the projections and not having the projections before we move forward with it. That was the other thing that kind of stood up to me. But I think the presentation tonight was fantastic, and, and really bringing some great numbers for, for me to get some questions answered. So, I mean, to, to know that we are typically $5 million to the positive on, on a year, and this year, we're coming in 3.5 million to the good above that, that's the 3-point million dollars. We're not talking about we're eight million ahead, we're basically three million ahead of a typical year. And we're still, the projections are based on that, and so we're not, we based, waiting a year based on, on the five million coming in at a positive every year. This year, we got three million extra, or 3.5. And what concerns me, and this is why I said, let's get the five, we have, we'll have a vote, we'll talk, and make sure we have the five-year projections, but I want to know, I was hoping to see, basically, new numbers, including the eight million or the three million, because it's really not that big of a deal, really, to be honest with you. It doesn't really, not going to change much in the long-term projections of what we're, we're, we're up against. And what I just want to follow up and just make a comment is that that 3.5 million dollars, a lot of that came from those, from the step concessions from the teachers that are going to be now, basically doubled, in a sense, by being made whole. We're going to take those two steps, so let's say, I don't know the numbers, but I'd like to know exactly. That's part of the numbers that we're, we're looking for, is where are we going to be now in two years after, you know, after 18 months? Where do we sit? And as I said, I, I think, I want to get the school done. I absolutely want to get the school done, and, and I think I agree with Mark that waiting a year may be prudent. I think I agree with Mr. Stone, our financial manager, that we should, should wait a year, but to God's honest, there's a side of me that wants to get that school done too, you know? Just kind of like, I didn't think I should have done the turf that was going against better judgment, but you know what? That's a 10-year legacy that, that needed to be completed and buried, because Turf the Rocks was a 10-year project, north and south. North got the field, and then both sides contribute to the Turf the Rocks funds, got money, got, you know, filtered into operations, and then we redid north and didn't do south. So that was a tough one for me to, to go ahead with. And again, that's not like we're paying it in one time, it's, it's over, over the years, but as I said, it's a tough, it's a tough job we all have here. We're all doing the best we can, and I, I respect the, the process has been a little, I respect the process, I try to respect the process, I'd like to see it improve. And as long as we're being transparent to the public, then that's great. So I hope you, nobody takes me personally if I come out and I, I, I ask questions and I come off in a way, but I just want to be transparent. And I think I will leave it there. It's probably one more point to have, but I'll let somebody else talk. And thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Hidalgo, Mr. Bylick. I just have a follow-up question regarding Joe's comments, or my comments. So how soon could we have the five-year projection so the board can make a completely informed decision? I mean, these are projections we've had in the past, it's, it's, we have updated numbers, we have updated assumptions. Can we have them next Thursday? I know they're, they're, they're projected to be at the, the May Finance Committee meeting, but can we have them sooner than that?
Mr. Bylick, I, I don't know that I can answer that question with certainty. We are in the home stretch of developing the 2122 budget, and I need to focus a lot of time with my colleagues on, on reducing the remaining budget deficit that we have, and that, that's going to take, that's going to take a lot of time. Committing to the May 15th Finance Committee meeting is even still aggressive, from my perspective, to get those five-year projections done, and it's not so much entering the data into the model as it is auditing the data and making sure that the, the model is producing a reasonable result that, that is logical, and then bringing it back to you and making sure that it, it jives with a, with a common sense understanding. So I, I, if you were, if you're asking me, could I complete that work by next week? The answer is no. I, I don't believe I can.
Oh, that's fair. Okay. So the earliest would be the May 15th, is that, was that the date?
Yes, I will, that will continue to be my target.
So Doug, if, if, if we had to delay this vote until after May 15th, what would that look like for the project?
It would be very difficult, if even possible, to get that first phase at Sulphine Stone ready to go. And, and the other piece I have amongst many other concerns would be that these projects were opened on March the 9th. The bid amounts, if we hadn't rejected the bids, but from a legality standpoint and arguing our position, they were opened March the 9th. If we hadn't awarded, we would have until 60 days, May 9th. So going after May 9th would be concerning to me from a whole nother, you know, standpoint relative to our ability to go back to contractors and ask them to honor numbers.
Yeah, that's, it's just so troubling. I, I just, I just don't know how this board responsibly makes a decision without having those five-year projections, because you can't, you can't make this decision in a, in a vacuum. So I, I, I know what my decision is. I feel bad for my fellow board members who have to make this decision without all that, that information, but I think it's, I think it's a really bad situation to be in, but that's all for me for now.
Thank you, Mr. Bylick. And I don't know who can answer this, but I want to just ask a comment on Mr. Hidalgo's "not a normal year." What have we spent related to COVID in terms of costs, PPE, extra cleaning, in a not-so-normal year? That wouldn't be in our, hopefully, in a, in a budget next year.
Mr. Solomon, bear with me just one minute while I...
Sorry about that, Bill.
According to the budget dashboard for February, which is the most recent one that's on our website and most easily accessible for me, we have spent 4.3 million dollars on all COVID-19 expenses. Now, that does include the Chromebooks that we ordered for moving into a one-to-one environment, and the live streaming equipment necessary to offer virtual instruction for, for our students. The personal protective equipment I have is $565,000. And I have other costs, which would include, the, the most significant increase would be our charter school tuition. Other costs are 1.75 million. So those, that's how you approximately get to your total of 4.3 million.
Okay. Thank you. Go next. Mr. Blocker, Dr. Thorwart, Mrs. Marcel, please. Somebody.
I don't have a whole lot to say, that our financial position was, was solid, my observation, my opinion. I just wish I had this deck when I had that conversation. Everybody knows where I stand. I'm in full support of moving forward with the renovations now. I think it must be done. I think you've demonstrated that to, to the public, that that's the most responsible decision there is, and, and like I said, I was ready to do it last week and prepared to support it should it come up for a vote.
One last point. I'll just say, in summary, basically, we're changing direction based off of 3.5 million dollars. Off, off a typical year, we still have that five-year projection that we all can hold as the current projection, so we'll be making a decision based on that current five-year projection. So we do have a five-year projection. It's there. It may not be a, you, you think that it could possibly? Go ahead.
Mr. Bylick? I'm sorry. The five-year projection is not accurate. It's, the, the five-year projection we saw, whenever we saw it last time, is not accurate because of two things. First of all, we have a higher fund balance, right? So the 29.1 million is going to, is, is going to be a positive effect to the five-year projection. So we don't know what the answer to the question is, are, are we on stable ground? Because we don't know what the fund balance is going to be in 29, in, in five years or three years. So it was looking very, very bleak. It was looking like, three years, we were going to be negative, and now it might be four, now it might be five, and that's all positive, but are we still negative? And then on top of that, we limited the, the assumptions. We said to our administration, do not remember, for the public and the rest of the board, that the original assumptions in those five-year projections assumed maximum tax increases to the, to the Act One index that was increased, I forget the name of the organization. So it was something like 3%, 3.1, 3.5. It was a cumulative 17.2 or 17.6% increase over five years, compounded. Now we don't have that. We don't have that revenue. So when you reduce that revenue, and I don't know what Mr. Stone's number is going to be, but if you just split the difference between what the Act One index is, or projected to be, and what the, the floor was for us, you're probably going to end up somewhere around 2.25%, 2%, and that's significantly lower than revenues at 3.1, 3.5. So those, those projections can't be right. They just can't be right. Joe, you're in finance, you know that. You make little changes, it's going to make a, sometimes a big effect. Especially, and not so much the little change, and I don't want to discount 3, 3.5 million dollars, because you can't be discounted, but, but the, the continued change of reducing revenues. So it would be much more arguable if everybody around this table last week or today says, I'll vote for a max tax increase. Then you can at least say, okay, let's go, let's push, let's push everything and get this work all done. But you can't say, no taxes or limited taxes, but let's get the work done, in my opinion, because it just, it makes it more challenging and puts the district more at risk. This is about putting the district at risk, and which risk is greater. So I hope that answers your question.
No, I appreciate that, no. But I wasn't trying to say that the plan, the plan's not out the door. What I'm trying to say is, $3 million is not going to change those, those five-year projections, whether it's four years or five years that you talk about. The $3 million savings today, which will be basically eaten up when we go ahead and make the, 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 the people whole, our employees whole. So I think that was, that, my point was mistaken, but basically, what I'm trying to say is, you know, we have, I'm, I'm concerned with that we don't see the, the numbers, and that really, we're talking 3.5 million dollars to totally reverse track, and I'd like to see how that affects our, you know, we have the effect of the bond rating, which is very important, that Dr. Fraser definitely touched upon there, as on the other side of the coin, something we could risk. But you make a very good argument, Dr. Fraser.
Thanks, Mr. Hidalgo. And if I could just comment on the five-year projection piece. Mr. Bylick, I agree with you completely. When you start changing these variables, you, I mean, especially the domino effect, the compounding effect. So, so there are, there are assumptions that have changed, that will change when we get a new look on the 15th. One of those that I think is really significant in the, in the positive direction is that part of the five-year projections that we did assumed that we would pay for the entire backlog, the entire CIP backlog, all 40 million in cash over a five-year period, which, which I'm, I don't think ever probably would have happened. And I think that you all would agree with that. And then, and the other piece that was, and this was just a function of timing, typically five-year projections should be done in the fall, you know, after audits are done before you're into, into the budget cycle. And, and obviously, this one wasn't. And, and we all understand why it wasn't. But the starting point for this, the current or previous five-year projection was an $8 million deficit. And as we'll talk about a little bit later on in the agenda, we already have that deficit down. I believe it's the $3.4 million. So, so even that change and then just how that compounds out over years. Mr. Stone, I did have a question. I, I, I thought that the base model was not, the, the base projection model was not based on maximum Act One, Act One tax increases. Is that?
The, the model, the model assumed that the Act One indexes would be lower in the years of the plan because of the fact that it was constructed at a time when we were presumably entering a recession. And so to, to, to calculate what those Act One indexes were, because there were not updated projections from any authoritative bodies, I simply looked back at historical Act One indexes from, from prior recessions and calculated a, a three-year average of what those, what those would be and then put those into the, into the model. So it's, I, I can't say that it was a, that it was a maximum or a minimum because it was, it was simply just a, a, a calculated, a calculated assumption that could have been higher or could have been lower depending on the economic factors that contribute to the index. In hindsight, it's, it is lower than what the IFO is now projecting, but at that time, the IFO had not updated a projection.
Right. And for two or three of those years, I want to say that the assumed tax increase was 1.6%. Am I remembering that correctly?
You are remembering correctly.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Let me just comment on that because-
In the room and, and not in the room.
Yeah, but let me just comment on that. And this is, and this is the reason for these updated, why these updated projections are so important. Because we had an updated projection with those IFO figures in there with the, with the maximum tax increases. And that's what we were working on with that. So that's why these, and this is why you wanted this conversation last week about we've got to nail down what assumptions we're working with, right? Because right now here in this room, we're saying, okay, well, we've got the IFO projections and we have the, the, the great recession numbers. And that's where this board had to agree on something. We did, so I'd like to see them, is my point. Joe, are you done? Or Mr. Tate?
Am I next?
You're raising your hand. I think you are.
Good. All right. I'm sorry. There was somebody ahead of me in the queue. I think the desire to get the best numbers available or possible is the right thing to do. But I would disagree that projections would be termed not accurate or can't be right. Projections are projections that are based on the best possible information, and they're also based on a set of assumptions. Last week, we worked through revising those assumptions, which was a good exercise to do. So we are getting continually more precise numbers on which to base our information. But those numbers are more precise and perhaps more accurate depending on your assumptions. They're not inaccurate and they're not incorrect. So I think it's, it's misleading to talk about the fact that we have information that is incorrect that we are using to base our decisions. I also think it's incorrect to say that we are rushed. We have been talking about renovating Sulphine Stone for eight years. We have been talking about specifics of this project for the last two years. We can always have more information to make our decisions, but we have far more data and budgetary information now to make these decisions than we did three years ago or four years ago when we were making even larger capital project decisions. So while it's good to always seek the best and most accurate information possible to make decisions, we have great information. We are not working with inaccurate information, and I would completely disagree that in any way this decision is rushed. I think we've been talking about it for a long time. We've given it adequate deliberation, and we have a great deal of excellent information to base this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Mrs. Marcel.
I just wanted to add on to something that Mr. Tate just spoke about in terms of history and also Mr. Hidalgo. So Mr. Hidalgo spoke about the TERF and kind of the history of that. I know, Mr. Tate, you just mentioned, you know, kind of the history of Sulphine Stone and some of the, the timelines that, that school has been looking at and the parents of that community have been, you know, kind of waiting for renovations, which I wasn't as familiar with because I've only been on the board for two and a half years. But I recently spoke to a parent that was at Sulphine Stone that was able to talk about that, which I think, you know, in terms of me supporting TERF and knowing that that went on for so many years, as someone that grew up in both Northampton and in Newtown because my parents were divorced, you know, that learning about that history, you know, it's helpful to me because, you know, for someone who moved into Wrightstown years ago and then became involved because of trying to keep that school open, you care a lot about the school. And while my, my kids and a lot of students from Wrightstown never went back to the finished Wrightstown Elementary School, we still were very proud of that school and were happy for the community that could be in that school. And so that does resonate a lot with me because sometimes when you learn about the history of the school and the community and how much people care about their school getting updated and getting air conditioning, you know, to a certain extent, this problem that we have with air conditioning, I feel like has been going on for so long. It's, you know, I graduated a long time ago from Council Rock before we head north and south. And, you know, just thinking about the fact that we still have elementary schools that don't have air conditioning is just unfortunate. But financially, it's just what we've had to do. And so, you know, we're in this position. I know I've had a lot of conversations with board members over the last two and a half years about how the decisions that we make, you know, future boards will always look back on and probably criticize, or they might think that they were wise to do. But, you know, but I think this decision is important for Council Rock moving forward. I think it's important for people that are in Wrightstown that go to Sulphine Stone. I, I do, you know, there were some things that I spoke about two weeks ago. The first was my financial concerns. Obviously, this news is favorable. I do appreciate the presentation tonight, which I didn't say yet. But, you know, I think that provides me a little bit more comfort that we have the room, you know, that we need to, to be able to make this happen. No one expected this year to be that way. You know, we really were prepared for the worst, which I, you know, I appreciate Dr. Fraser and Mr. Stone for helping us to, to do this the right way. So I would say, you know, that concern, I, I feel much more comfortable with where we're at right now in terms of some of the other concerns that I had with COVID and the way the building would be since the students would be in the building. You know, in terms of the way the cafeteria was set up and the gym, you know, I did end up speaking to Mr. Harlan recently, and he shared with me, you know, kind of his plan and using the stage in the cafeteria area and some other areas for lunches if we have to do social distancing for eating in the fall, which was helpful to me. You know, and I, and I, he did say to me, you know, that we always do the best that we can for our students. And I believe him. He's a wonderful principal, just like everyone else within Council Rock. And so I do appreciate the time that, you know, people have spent to help mitigate some of the concerns that I've had. I think that, you know, also for the Wrightstown parents that are not at Sulphine Stone but are worried about redistricting, you know, Dr. Fraser, I appreciate your comments because that is something that a lot of people, you know, still, they still bring it up. You know, that redistricting is, is just something that is just stuck with a lot of people. And so I appreciate your comments, and I think it's helpful to that community to hear that. And so, you know, from where I'm sitting, I do want to try to move forward with voting on this because I think it's, it's worth it. I've had conversations with people talking about how this year has a lot of one-time funding that may not be available in the future because there's a lot of COVID funding. There's a lot of, you know, money that is available that maybe in future years wouldn't be. And so I think looking at the costs for the future, if we hold off, I think that we are going to end up, you know, probably paying more money based on some of the information that was presented to us. So I think at this point, I'd like to move forward with Sulphine Stone, but I also would like us to be able to hear from the public because they're hearing about this, obviously, for the first time this evening. And I think it's important for us to hear from our public and, you know, see what their perspective is. Because I know personally, you know, when we heard this news, that we were very, you know, happy to hear about it, but it just took some time for it to, to sink in and to think it through. And I think that we also, you know, we need to make sure that the public has a chance to, to think about it as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcel. Dr. Thorwood just stepped out, so in the meantime, I, I'll ask a question of Dr. Fraser, if you would. One of your slides, discipline with all expenditures, furor of certain major purchases. Walk me through some of the things that we didn't spend money on that we're going to end up spending money in the future or not. Walk me through how expenditures were curtailed. Was anything missed in our classrooms that we still have time in the year to make up? Were we confident that those, those expenditures are, were softened enough that, that we don't need to go down that road?
Yeah. If Mr. Stone could do a better job than could I, speaking to a lot of the particulars. But, you know, I know that we had a couple vehicles, for instance, that we didn't purchase. A, a lot of this stuff wasn't classroom-based. Some of it was, but, but the big-ticket items for the most part weren't. And, you know, again, we showed, we've shown our track record here of controlling expenses. Certainly, we went, you know, a rung beyond that this past year, but I would say only a rung beyond that. We've, we've been controlling expenses and, you know, I, I go back to, to my first couple months on the job and full-day kindergarten came up. And, and that was a very difficult and unpopular decision or, or recommendation that I had to make. But those of you who were on the board at the time, you recall that that carried a $2.9 million cost recurring every single year. So think about where we're at today and if we had those additional $2.9 million every single year. So we, we've made difficult decisions. We will continue to make difficult decisions. I, I don't, I don't think we, we adversely impacted the quality of teaching and learning in any way. As Mr. Stone had indicated, we also spent a lot of money this year on, on some supplies, including instructional supplies that we typically wouldn't have. But no, I, I feel good. I don't feel like we're in a position where now we have some catch-up to do or incur additional expenses down the road as a result of, of these curtailments this year. So Mr. Stone, would you mind just pointing out maybe a couple of the bigger expenditures that we did hold off on this past year?
We deferred the purchase of a, of a lawnmower at, I believe it was Rolling Hills Elementary School. And we also, we were poised to approve a bid for art panels that are used across the district for art shows. That bid was set to expire December 31st, and I recommended that we defer that $50,000 purchase to future budget in order to be prudent with, with our, with our budget. So those, those are the two significant ones that come to mind. But there have been a number of other requests that we've asked folks to hold off until July 1st of '21 to try to make, make sure we're in the best position possible.
And that art panel decision was certainly aided by the fact that we could not have our district art show this year, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that's the point that I know I questioned when I saw this deck. And I'm sure as our, our community starts to digest this, they're going to ask the same thing. So, Dr. Thorwood, any final thoughts from you, sir?
No, I think I'm done.
So at this point, I, I have, I'm keeping track here. I think I've kept a good track. I have Mrs. Brooks, Mr. Tate, Mr. Block, Mrs. Marcel, and Mrs. McKee on board with moving this to a vote at least. And I assume we would do this at another special meeting of the board or before commi-, Education Committee?
Yeah. I, I, time is of the essence. This past-
Is that enough time?
The 19th, and I had written this to the board, was our notice to proceed date. So, and as Mr. Taylor just explained, any day thereafter technically allows the contractor to, to have an additional day on the back end. So we are scheduled to meet this coming Monday for Ed Committee. I would, I would suggest that, that this coming Monday, a special board meeting for this vote prior to Ed Committee would be, would be wise. We can get it advertised and be in compliance from that standpoint. So that would put us a week behind schedule, which, and I had alerted the board to this, and I don't want to put any fear into anyone, but I also want to make sure that we're, that we are being transparent. Worst-case scenario is Sulphine Stone isn't ready for the first day of school, which means, and we would only be talking about a week if in fact we are approving this on Monday, should that be how this plays out. So worst-case scenario is we open up the rest of the district. We're not able to open up Sulphine Stone physically. I don't think that'll happen. Mr. Taylor has given me enough confidence to make that statement, but of course, we never say never, and that is one of the ramifications, Mr. Hidalgo, to your questions earlier around the timeliness of this. So, you know, that either means that we adjust the Sulphine Stone schedule should that worst-case scenario play out, or it means that we open the first couple of days or, or worst-case, the first week virtually at, at Sulphine Stone, assuming that we're still permitted to do so, which as of today, looking ahead to 2122, we, we're still operating under that 521, 520.1 provision, which means that we could open up the school year virtually.
Dr. Fraser, my sense is the committee, or the community in, in the heat of August, early September would not have a huge issue with that.
Okay. And again, I don't think it'll come to that. Mr. Taylor, jump in if I'm saying anything out of turn, but just want to also make sure that, that we're transparent about any possibilities that exist. So if Monday would be agreeable, we're already scheduled to meet. I know that we're scheduled to meet via Zoom because we have a lot of textbook approvals and need curriculum coordinators to be present for that, and that's awfully difficult to do in person with the way things are. So I would, I would request Monday and request that we hold that special meeting via Zoom and then feed directly into the Education Committee after that special meeting.
Any issues from the board?
I can't be there Monday.
Mr. Bylick?
I'm usually not Mondays, if you remember the committees. The, uh, ethi-, ethics, not ethics, policy, sorry, Policy Committee.
Anybody else?
I'm going to have difficulty, but I'll try.
Okay.
These are not typically-
These are not typically what I schedule for this.
What do we have on Thursday? This coming Thursday?
We don't.
Can we do it on Thursday? That's just three more days. At least you have the, the more of the board. Anybody else have a problem on Thursday?
I, I have a work conflict.
The board calendar was put out like a year ago, so I knew that that I had off this Thursday.
Okay, that's fine.
Same.
Just trying to get everyone assembled.
We have two noes and a possible bill.
Yeah, I can't do Thursday.
Can't do Thursday. We could do Monday.
Monday, yes.
Of course, as always, sir.
You have enough?
Yeah, I, uh, you know, I, I certainly understand individual schedules, and, um, I also would have a conflict. As it turns out, next Thursday, I could probably adjust it. Um, but, uh, you know, we, we do approve or not approve technically, but we, uh, we agreed to a schedule. We just agreed, I think, at the last meeting for next year's calendar, so we did the same thing, you know, a year ago. So this, this upcoming Monday has been, has been on the calendar for, for the better part of a year now. Um, so if we could do it then, I think that would be best case. And, and I also really hesitate to add additional days to the backend of this project in, in late August.
Does anybody have a quorum? Good. All right. We'll do it Monday.
Special meeting.
Special meeting of the board?
We'll advertise for a special meeting at 7:00 with Education Committee.
Following directly thereafter. It'll be held Zoom, correct?
That would be my preference, yes, because I don't think that we can, uh, that we can hold Education Committee in person, given the nature of this meeting. So, yes, we could do both.
Those special meetings would be rather quick, I would assume, and, and then go right into Education. Any comments? Anybody else? All right, if that's it, we can move down. Mr. Block, I want to ask you to read, uh, go into items for approval and, uh, number four, please.
Sure, I move to approve consent agenda. Items B to D is contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Second.
Second is Mrs. Marcel. Any discussion on this matter here? Any objections? There are none. I'm going to ask the secretary to record the motion passing announcement consent. Mr. Block, would you mind, Larry?
Am I going to E, correct? Uh, I move to approve Plan Con Part F Attachment C for the Hillcrest Elementary School additions and renovations project.
Second.
Mrs. Marcel, second. Any comments? Want to ask for a roll call on this, please?
Ed Tate?
Yes.
Mike Thorwart?
Yes.
Denise Brooks?
Yes.
Marion McKee?
Yes.
Joe Hidalgo?
Yes.
Kristin Marcel?
Yes.
Ed Solomon?
Yes.
Andy Block?
Yes.
Mark Byler?
I'm so sorry. I'm going to ask a question. So is this just to get our Plan Con money? If Plan Con money ever comes back?
Yeah, I will speak to it after the roll call.
Okay, I'll, I'll vote for that, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 9-0. Dr. Frazier, please?
Yeah, so this is, this is more for the community's edification than the board's. Uh, Mr. Byler, you're spot on with it. There's been a Plan Con moratorium, uh, from the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the past few years. Plan Con is a system, uh, designed to reimburse school districts for new construction projects and significant renovation projects. In spite of this moratorium, we, uh, as evidenced by, uh, by this agenda item and the board's support of it, we continue and we have continued dating back to the past few years to submit all the necessary paperwork. We follow the process. We submit the paperwork, the forms, we meet the deadlines. Um, we recently, we being, uh, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Stone and I recently tallied up the missing money that we have, uh, over the course of this moratorium, which is kind of fitting, uh, given our discussion this evening. It, it sums up, uh, to over $12 million. That's, that's the amount of Plan Con reimbursement that we would have received, that we haven't received, uh, because of this moratorium. But we're always optimistic, and you never know when that moratorium gets lifted and should they lift it in arrears and go back and say, hey, for those, those that we're submitting anyway and doing their due diligence, we'll, uh, we'll honor that. That's why we continue to submit these. So my compliments to Mr. Taylor, my compliments to Mr. Stone for, uh, continuing to be really diligent with this process. That moratorium is significant. Um, just imagine the conversations we'd be having if we had 12.4, 12.5 million more dollars, uh, that would have come to us over these past few years.
And everyone should write their legislators.
I concur.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Uh, letter F. Uh, Mr. Block, would you mind?
Uh, certainly. I move to approve the proposed final 2020-21 general fund budget on the Form PDE 2028 and the direct administration, and direct the administration to make the proposed final budget available for public inspection.
Second.
Mrs. Marcel. Discussion, Mr. Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. I do have just some brief remarks, uh, to inform the board and the community of, of what they are, uh, about to vote on. Uh, this is a, the, um, one of the final steps in the Act One process, the state mandate, uh, related to, related to school district budgets. This, this budget that you, that we are asking for your approval on does not represent a commitment to a final budget. It's simply a, a step towards that approval, which will, uh, which is scheduled to occur on June 3rd. Um, and it represents progress that we've made from the approval of the preliminary budget in January to, to this point. As noted in the, uh, in the recommended action, this will be posted on the, uh, school district website in the form that is required by PDE, known as the PDE 2028, and we will do so tomorrow morning. In that proposed final budget, which was presented at the Finance Committee meeting last week, the current assumption for, uh, the real estate tax increase is 3%, which is the maximum permitted under, uh, Act One for this fiscal year. And we have made adjustments to date, uh, to revenue of almost $800,000 in, uh, in a positive way, meaning revenue is expected to increase. And we've reduced expenditures by $1.75 million. The majority of that reduction coming from, uh, announced retirements from our professional staff members. And there is a natural savings when we replace a typically more veteran teacher, uh, with a less senior teacher. There is, uh, there are cost savings associated with that. The proposed final budget, uh, has revenue at this point of $248.4 million and expenditures of $253.97 million, which, uh, would yield a deficit remaining of minus $5.6 million that we still need to contend with before the final budget is approved on June 3rd. Now, in the interim time since I presented the proposed final budget, and I'll just quickly go back, the board is, I am seeking approval for the board to approve this proposed final budget, as is noted in the, in the table here. Uh, but we continue to do our work, uh, to, to reach that, that final budget goal. And, uh, you will note, there are a few items here, um, noted in green that have further reduced the, uh, the, the remaining budget deficit. So, uh, on the revenue side, um, there, we are, uh, entering our second year of a PCCD grant, which is, uh, from the, uh, Pennsylvania Coalition on Crime and Delinquency. It's a state grant, uh, for the councilors that were approved as part of last year's budget, and that was simply revenue that was not included in the first draft budget, but we will be receiving. So, uh, we're adding $219,000 for that grant. Uh, on the expenditure side, you do see that if, uh, if you noticed at the Finance Committee, we had 21.5 positions, uh, for retirements and resignations from the professional staff. That number has increased to 24. On a net basis, we did have to add a few positions that were not included in the first draft budget. Um, not new positions, just positions that were not included. Uh, so those savings increased from, uh, about $1.6 million on the expenditure side to about $1.8 million. We've also, uh, continued to work on reductions in, in the department budgets, and we have, um, also looked at, we continue to compare actual spending to what's been budgeted to see if there's any opportunity to, to make reductions. Uh, so we, we are proposing reductions of about $221,000 for our contracted substitutes, uh, based on the fact that we are not spending as much as we have typically budgeted. And we've also made, uh, departmental budget reductions of about $1.2 million on top of what was presented last, um, last, uh, last week, uh, which that would bring, uh, the updated version of the proposed final budget. Again, not the version that you are scheduled to approve. That brings it to $252.1 million. So the remaining budget deficit, assuming a 3% tax increase, would be now $3.4 million. If there were no tax increase and that revenue were, were to be forfeit, the, uh, remaining budget deficit would increase to $8.37 million. So the, the, there is a significant amount of work that needs to happen in the next several weeks, uh, but as far as official steps that must happen in the, in the budget timeline, we are reaching the, the, the close of the process. Uh, so, uh, the board is slated to approve the proposed final budget. Again, it is simply a perfunctory step, uh, in the process. Uh, no commitments are made. And then we have a Finance Committee meeting in May and board approval for the final budget on June 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Any further comments from the board? Mr. Hidalgo, question?
Sure. Just a question real quick. Um, looking at the, the last page that talks about the fund balance summary, uh, it's not up on there, but I would always like to see when we talk about ending, um, numbers with the budget, where we land with the, with the fund balance. And so I guess for the public's edification, if they're going to go and look at these numbers and see the last page, can you explain, uh, what, what we're submitting to the, uh, PDE versus what we are projecting from our last conversation tonight, previous conversation?
Yes, I, I can do it. I'm going to be doing it from memory, so, um, hopefully I don't make a mistake. Um, the projected beginning fund balance for 21, 22, so next fiscal year, which starts on July 1st, would be approximately $31.5 million. Uh, if this, if there were no further changes to the proposed final budget that gets approved, then the fund balance would be reduced by $5.6 million. So it would take us below, um, 25 million approximately. Um, and again, that doesn't account for the, the 2.37 that may be committed for funding of future debt service increases. Um, so, uh, again, right now, you're, you're looking only at a picture of the, of the budget at point in time. It doesn't necessarily reflect, um, the, the actuality of what, what may transpire. We'll, we'll continue to refine the projections and, uh, continue to refine the, the revenues and expenditures for 21, 22 to get a better picture when we approve. We ask for your approval of the, um, final budget in, in June.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That was, that was good information. Just one quick thing is the, on the form that I'm looking at, it says the final, uh, total estimates committed assigned unassigned fund balance and budgetary reserves of $18 million point seven.
And that, the reason for that, Mr. Hidalgo, is that it does not include any, uh, any ending surplus that's estimated as part of the 21, 22, or excuse me, the 2021 budget process yet.
Right.
It's, it's just-
The eight million.
assumes that we, um, had no, have no change in fund balance from one, from last year to, to, uh, to this year.
I appreciate that. I just wanted it to be out there for the public looking at the numbers. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mrs. Marcel?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Stone for his work on the budget. Um, I appreciate the expenditures, obviously, going down. Um, I know we talked in, uh, our last meeting about how some of us weren't comfortable with a 3% increase, but we understand that today we're just voting on a preliminary budget, so this is not final. So I just wanted to thank you for your work there because I know a lot of us spoke about trying to bring that down. Um, so thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Solomon, please.
Yes, Mr.
Um, it's great that the budget deficit continues to, to come down. Uh, great work. I look forward to what happens as it does every year, as you continue to work towards the end. Um, I do understand that there's a procedural vote. Um, but, uh, I'm going to stay consistent with my position. Um, last week, uh, additionally to Ms. Marcel, I noticed that, uh, in, in last week's conversation, there, uh, there was a lot of question around where that, uh, increase actually should fall next year. So, um, I am pleased that Sulfine Stone, uh, will be considered, uh, on Monday, and, uh, I'll be an active participant in the conversation about what this final budget looks like, um, over the course of the next month.
Thank you, Mr. Block. Anybody else? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Joseph Hidalgo?
Yes.
Kristin Marcel?
Yes.
Ed Solomon?
Yes.
Andy Block?
No.
Mark Byler?
Yes.
Ed Tate?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
No.
Denise Brooks?
Yes.
Marion McKee?
Yes.
Yes, at 7:00 too. That wraps it up. Any other further comments? Tough evening tonight for the board. Great conversation. Um, appreciate the candid conversation with the administration and the questions, obviously, from my colleagues. Um, this was not an easy conversation for any of us, and I think, once again, the board worked through it collectively in a, in a way that's going to benefit, um, the kids of Council Rock, which is why we signed up for this. So anybody else has a comment? If not, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.